Should we record?
We're, uh.
Okay. Before we get going, I'm gonna read the notice. Hopefully, everybody can hear me through my mask. Notice the whole teleconference meeting pursuant to Minnesota Statute thirteen D David point zero two one. Due to the current federal state of emergency declaration and guidance about limiting person-to-person contact due to COVID-19 pandemic lax with the school board of the Pelican Rapids School District, all future meetings, other Pelican Rapids School Board will be conducted in accordance to Minnesota Statutes thirteen D David point zero two one. Meetings by telephone or other electronic means until further notice. One or more board members may participate by telephone or other electronic means in accordance with Minnesota Statutes thirteen D David point zero two one. Members of the public are not permitted to attend this meeting due to the current pandemic. Persons may monitor this meeting from a remote location via Zoom. A link to this meeting will be posted on our district website. Public comment for school board meetings during opportunity for visitors to speak may be submitted as follows to vriply, B R I P L E Y at pelicanrapids.k12.mn.us. And I'll call the meeting to order, and let's start with the roll call with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic which stands on our nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all. Welcome, everybody. First item up is to approve the meeting agenda. Do we have anything to, we can't really add anything, but as stated?
Yep.
Okay. So, motion by Greg. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mike. Any discussion on the agenda? You read no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Gotta do our roll call, right?
Yes, that's what I was waiting for.
Let's do our roll call. Brenda?
Aye.
Anna?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
Brittany?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Opportunity for visitors to address the board. Anybody? No comments, Mark?
Nope.
Okay, we'll move on. Business items. First item up is to accept the resignation of Jeff Peter as halftime elementary music teacher as of August twenty first, twenty twenty. And I've got a letter. Jeff Peter has written, and I'll just quickly read it. "School Board of Pelican Rapids and Administration, as of August twenty first, twenty twenty, I resigned from my halftime position of teaching K through two general music and some band lessons due to uncertainties of COVID-19, my family's wishes, and my risk factors, and my doctor's recommendation. Thank you for the opportunity to work with kids another year. It was an awesome year. I will miss the kids. Sincerely, Jeff Peter." Thanks, Jeff. I'll make a motion to approve the resignation of Jeff Peter as halftime elementary music teacher as of August twenty first, two thousand twenty.
A second.
Second by Brenda. Any discussion on the resignation of Jeff Peter?
I'd like to thank him for all his years and coming back to help again.
Yep.
Good job.
Mr. Nelson, would you have a comment?
I would like to, uh, just add what Mike said is, uh, thank Mr. Peter for his years of service and then coming back and, uh, helping us out last year and, uh, doing a great job, and he'll be missed by not only the students, but the staff that he works with as well. So, thank you, Mr. Peter.
Thank you, Derek. Okay, here you know, other discussion. All those in favor of accepting the resignation of Jeff Peter signify by saying aye, and this will be a roll call vote. Brenda?
Aye.
Anna?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
Brittany?
Aye.
Aye. Resignation carries. Next item, adjust the fall staff workshop days. August thirty first, September first, September second will be in school days. Two days will be flex days in August. So. Motion by Greg. Second by Brittany.
Can you explain really what the flex days mean?
Yep, so Monica Thompson, we're lining up. Monica Thompson's offering some sessions here in August. With three models we have, we want to give teachers more time or times earlier than the week before school starts. So that's why we want to move them. So it's flexible. She's gonna offer the next three weeks some different sessions for teachers to attend. So they got put in two full days before staff workshop. They also, they also can do the Thursday, you know, moving that Thursday to the flex day. We're looking at possibly offering some sessions on that Thursday too, so if they don't wanna, just put one day in, they can put that Thursday in too.
Okay.
Any additional discussion on that? There ain't no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye, and I'll do a roll call.
Do we have a second?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
Brittany?
Yeah. That's right.
Okay, Brittany?
Aye.
Aye. Greg?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Anna?
Aye.
Brenda?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item, review MDE's Safe Learning Plan for two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one.
I'll be walking through an overview, so does everybody have their Safe Learning Plan handy? It's a twenty-one-page document here. We're, we're certainly not going to read the twenty-one-page document, but, uh, from an overview that I'm going to give you, and then, uh, the next you'll hear about the Pelican Rapids Fall Planning Team. They've incorporated this Safe Learning Plan into the Pelican Rapids Plan, so. So I just want to give an overview of what's happening, so, um, the week of the twenty-seventh, we were hoping it was going to be earlier, but the week of the twenty-seventh, MDE Governor Walz released the Safe Learning Plan for two thousand twenty, twenty-one. It's a localized, data-driven approach is the title of, of the plan. Uh, there's, there's lots of information in here. Overall, I think it, initial start here, we're impressed with the plan, and, and especially encouraged by the support that's being offered. So we have the Minnesota Department of Health, we have the Minnesota Department of Education, we have Otter Tail Public Health, along with the school district making decisions. It's not just us standalone. And, and then also on, uh, by August twenty-fourth, Lake's Country is working with the state, so Lake's Country, um, Community Service, Country Service is, is, uh, providing regional support teams. They'll have, if, if we have a case in our school district, they have rapid response teams, they'll have testing teams, so, um, so I feel, um, I don't know if comforted is the right word, but, but I feel more confident that we're not in this alone, and, and we're working to death together with the county, our community, to, to provide a plan for our students. You know, the, the first few pages are lots of information, the purpose, the, the planning goals, table of contents, but what I'm gonna have you do is skip to page four right away. And please read, read everything. It's, it's a very well-written plan, but just for the sake of brevity tonight, I, I just want to hit some of the highlights. So on page four, you'll see public health guidelines. So incorporated in our plan, no matter which plan that we're in, obviously distance learning, if everyone's at home, that, that's, uh, it's easier to do some of these, uh, things, social distancing, distancing, for example, so. So all of our plans, uh, we're working hard, uh, on the, the bullet points at the lower part of the page, so social distancing, face coverings, uh, protecting vulnerable populations, hygiene, you know, washing hands, cleaning the buildings, monitoring, you know, ventilation, transportation, uh, meals, mental health. All of those things are, are, are being considered, so I'll, uh, and, and procedures for these are being developed. And this next month is going to be a very, very busy month, working through all these details. The next page is, is really, the next few pages here, uh, five through seven is really kind of the meat of the plan and some of the things that we have to follow. So when we're at, uh, how do, how do schools determine their safe learning model? Well, first of all, um, we would have loved to do the early, but we're finding later is going to be better. And, and the reason for that, uh, we will have data, uh, more up to data at our next meeting on August seventeenth that we'll be able to make a plan. The board is required to do what's called a base learning plan. And the base learning plan is how are we going to start the year? So the board will approve that, and MSBA, uh, we, we sat in on, uh, uh, very, very good informative webinars, uh, quick Q and A sessions, both Friday and Saturday morning. And they are developing a resolution that the board will consider on August seventeenth, and in that plan, uh, it'll talk about the plan that we should be starting in. It will be talking about, um, how we've worked with public health. So one of the reasons we're delaying the decision from tonight to the seventeenth is step number four. Public schools in consultation with public health will determine a learning model to begin the school year and can communicate this decision with the school community. So lots of information here, and I'm talking fairly fast, sorry, but, but every Thursday from now on, we will have a document, which, which you also have, I believe, printed for you, called Data, Data for K-12 Schools, fourteen-day COVID-19 case rate by county. So that comes out on Thursday, so the, the closest one to the seventeenth, I believe, is August thirteenth. So that data will come out, and it'll give us a, a range of where our case rate is per ten thousand people in, in Minnesota, and I'll go over from some data on that here in a second. So on Friday, we have scheduled a meeting, uh, we will have a COVID Command Incident Team that will meet with public health. They will go through lots of cases, uh, or, or data, and then make a recommendation. School Board members, members will be part of this team, and they will make a recommendation to the school board in which base learning plan that we should be, we could consider. And then the board has full say, and, and so here's an example. Right now, if you turn the page to page six, the top chart is, that chart is really going to be our guide for the year. So if we have zero to nine cases per ten thousand, the state is saying you can be in-person for all students. If we creep up and go ten to nineteen, in-person learning for elementary students and hybrid learning for secondary. If you go much more increased, twenty to twenty-nine, they're recommending hybrid for all students in the school. If you go to thirty to forty-nine, you'd go hybrid for elementary and distance learning for secondary students, and then fifty-plus distance learning for all. Well, this is all guides. The board can choose to make, because, uh, right now, our case rate is seven point nine three. So that data was the fourteen-day look back, and that information was given us to on July thirtieth. But it's creeping up. If you look on the second page under Otter Tail County, at the end of, uh, June, uh, June thirteenth, we were at two point oh seven. And then it was one point two one the next week. July, June twenty-seventh was one point five five cases per ten thousand. Then it starts creeping up, July fourth, two point five nine. Then it's six point three eight as of July eleventh, and now July eighteenth, the most recent data we have, is seven point nine three. So you can see the trend right now is, is increasing, and, uh, so in all likelihood, the indications are by August thirteenth, we could be over ten. Not saying we are. How does the mask implementation work? Does that help drop it down? But so we take this data, and that does not mean that's the golden ticket. Here's your, your seven point nine three, so it's zero to nine. So boom, we get to start in person. That's just not the way it's going to work. The team has to look at, are all those cases in Otter Tail County, and this is just Otter, Otter Tail County data that I'm talking about, are all the cases over in Parker's Prairie? Say we're over ten, we're at, uh, twelve. If all the cases are in the far southeast part of the district and not near Pelican Rapids, we could consider a, a different model than what's recommended. Or on the other hand, it's seven, it's seven point nine three, or even if it's three or four or five, very low. But if all the cases are in Pelican Rapids, we have staff members, we have students, we have, so, so then we go look, oh, we, we shouldn't be in school. We need to go hybrid or distance based on the localization of that plan. So, you know, I've said a lot right there, so, so, uh, really, the, in, in a nutshell, we're going to have weekly data. The command team, the command, incident command team is going to be reviewing that data. They're going to be working with public health to make decisions, uh, you know, uh, and school board members are part of that, so. So I'll just stop right there. That's a lot of information. Uh, what, what questions do you have right off the bat? Okay?
Brenda or Anna, any questions?
And there'll be lots of opportunity, because, uh, mine's the short presentation, and, and the Pelican Rapids team, uh, you know, Mr. Corf, Mr. Nelson talking about our specific plan. Uh, please, please ask lots of questions. So on the next page, there is two boxes, uh, at the lower part of the page. You got required for in-person and hybrid learning, and then required for hybrid learning. Well, some of these things, another reason, uh, why we couldn't approve a plan tonight, we don't have a masking policy yet. Uh, that will come into play on August seventeenth. MSBA is committed. They will have a masking, a model masking policy for us. And, and then lots of the things that you see and hear. Procedures, all of this, uh, these things will be outlined in our plan, communicated. And then for the hybrid learning, working on the, uh, social distancing of six feet, the fifty percent capacity in both facilities, transportation. So those are some of the detail. This is the work that, uh, your, your admin team and your, your, uh, the team that, uh, Mr. Corf and Mr. Nelson have been working with, very, very hardworking, getting lots of good details in for the start, for, for our, for us, uh, to start the school year. I'm going to jump to page twelve. Just want to remind people that masks are going to be required. And, and just wanted to note that the state of Minnesota is providing each student a mask. They're providing each staff member a mask, and they're also providing each mass, uh, staff, uh, member a shield. And, uh, you know, those are, that's a good start, uh, but we will also be recommending to parents, we're having supply lists for parents put together. One mask, you, you're probably going to want a few masks, so then you don't have, so you can throw them in the wash and, and have a clean mask each and every day, so that, but I just wanted to note that, uh, just the distribution of the masks will go to the service co-op, and we'll be able to pick up masks for all of our students. And there's also going to be a testing, uh, kit for each teacher. Uh, if they're not feeling well, they will have access to an immediate test, and, and the rapid response team will help, uh, deliver that and, uh, and, uh, take that. So, um, the next few pages go into responding to confirmed, uh, tests, testing process, the things there. Communicating to families. I'd like to jump to there, page sixteen. So what we're planning on doing is you'll, you'll see the, um, our, our plan, you, you know, certainly this plan is, uh, Safe School Plan is going to be on the website. We want to have a very large icon, almost like a dashboard, so parents, we drive them to the website, and every single day, uh, we would have a, a mantra. It is, uh, Tuesday, September eighth, it's the first day of school. If, if we're in hybrid learning, for example, uh, group A, A through K is in school today, uh, and then the next day it flips over to another group. It, uh, it has lots of information that parents can, if they forget, is it a group A day, a group B day, you know, all of, all of that information will have up-to-date, uh, needs and, and guidance for them. We're working on school-aged childcare, especially if we're in the hybrid, uh, learning area. The, uh, providing childcare for essential workers is a requirement for us, uh, so we'll be working on details, uh, with that. So all of these scenarios have to have picking up, dropping off. If my child is sick, how do I pick them up? Uh, how are meals? Another, uh, case, uh, on the, um, next page seventeen, we have to provide meals to all students, so if we have, uh, students that are in the hybrid learning model, and it's their turn to be home that day, how do they get meals delivered? Are, are we gonna re, are we having them pick them up, or are we having the buses transport the meals to them? Or if they're there on a Tuesday, are we sending them home with the SAC lunch for the next day on, um, on Tuesday so they can have for Wednesday? Lots of details like those, uh, scenarios will be worked through and, uh, very clearly spelled out for all of our, our students and, and parents. Uh, the, the last part of the document talks about funding, and that's more of, uh, you know, business end of that. We're, we're already looking at, um, you know, lots of different, uh, funding sources. I just saw today that more funding is coming from the state, another two hundred and fifty million, I believe it was, to go along with the CARES dollar. So this is, this is more expensive, you know, providing masks, uh, you know, and there's also been a lot of movement on, uh, substitute teachers, and for example, um, Pelsby is allowing, their, their intent is to allow some paraprofessionals, say we have a, a, uh, a stu, or a, a staffer, a teacher is sick but is asymptomatic, could teach from home. Uh, my belief is the teacher could zoom into the class, deliver instruction, and we could have a para in the classroom managing the, uh, supervision of the students in conjunction with the teacher. So there's, there's, uh, you know, the more we dive into this, the more questions we have, it seems, and, and going through, uh, but we're, we're doing our best to follow through on, on what we know right now, and the key for this year is, uh, no matter how we start the year, no matter how the board decides to start the year, it's guaranteed to change. I know everyone wants to know, I wanna, I have to know the plan so I can provide, get daycare, childcare lined up and all this. Um, we, we are going to, flexibility is going to be the key, but we also have to give time for adjustment, uh, and, and so lots of patience, lots of, uh, understand, patience and understanding and, and working with the parents, so we'll be, um, yeah. I'll stop there. There, I'm sure you have questions, or, and if, if not, we can jump into the, um, the Pelican Rapids Plan and, uh, continue presentations and, and, and have discussion, so. I'll, I'll go on mute unless you have specific questions right now.
Questions, Jerry, just one on, before we move on? Okay. Why don't we move on to, uh, to our fall planning plan of the district? Hey, if you want to take a look at the, the package that describes our free learning models. And anytime, uh, when we go through it tonight, if you have any advice on us, what we need to add or change, let us know, we'll make, uh, changes here. This is something that we want to provide families, students, the community of what it will look like here at Pelican Rapids. If you go to page one, it just talks about, uh, the free learning models, and the in-person learning, distance learning, hybrid learning. And just so you know, we could have, possibly have one building like in-person and another building hybrid. So, or we could all be hybrid, or you all could be distance, or you could all be in-person. Just a reminder that we do have to offer distance learning to students who want distance learning. So, our fall, uh, planning committee has been working hard over the last month to put all these, these plans together. Hybrid learning would look like a group A would be in-person learning on Tuesdays, Thursdays, distance learning Wednesday, Friday. Group B would be in-person learning on Wednesdays and Fridays, and then distance learning Tuesdays and Thursday. We are looking at a couple different ways of splitting up, uh, students, get the A through the K, or, you know, L through Z. We're also looking at, do we do in-town? And then country. So in-town's A, country is, is B. So it's another thing that we're looking at this week. Any questions with, kind of, the free models so far? Okay, the next part, um, Mr. Ness talked about the data-driven approach, and that, uh, you know, we'll look at the county numbers. We'll look at, uh, I just want to reiterate what Mr. Ness said too, is that in Parker's Prairie, they have a lot of cases down here, but around Pelican Rapids, there's not a lot of cases in the county. We still can, don't have to change the model, just a reminder on that part. What else you have to look at? If the cases, for example, are zero to nines, we're in-person learning for all students. However, we get some positive cases, then our, our team would look at going to hybrid or distant learning. Okay? Now, let's go to the safe learning environment. Let's go to masks. Let's go to the health, so. Sherry Lennis is here. She can talk a little bit about the health part of that.
Yeah, so far we've discussed, um, the masks.
Sure.
Oh, sorry.
You're on stage.
So far, we've talked about the masks. We know that that's gonna be a, a mandate, so we're gonna go ahead and make sure that they have that as part of their supplies. Um, health assessment is very important, so we've discussed about when they come off the bus. Um, what doors they will come in. We'll have temp checks. And then if they forgot their mask, they'll get one. Um, they should have a mask when they get on the bus, but you hope when they get off the bus, they'd also have one, so we will still have masks there. Um, if we have someone that ends up coming in with, um, a temp, a cough, a sore throat, says they can't smell, they can't taste, or has any other symptoms, then we have a designated room in elementary and in high school. So then we can have them separate, get ahold of parents, and have them go home. Um, washing hands is going to be another big thing that we want to reiterate with all of the kids and students. Um, and then markings on the floor, we've discussed that, for Trevor, about having the markings, so we can make sure that we limit how close they are together. We really want to make sure that they're six feet apart at all times as much as we can. Um, we've also talked about keeping them with a pod, so to say. So we can make sure that if they do have symptoms, that kind of thing, I can track that with public health and Department of Health to find out who is positive, who is not, and track those. Um, trying to think, anything else, Trevor, that we had discussed? That I have forgotten? Yep, the tents and the doors. We just really want to make sure that we're keeping our students along with the staff as safe as we can. Okay, and?
Jerry?
Yep?
What are you, what are you asking parents to do when they leave the, uh, the home? When the child is leaving the home, what are you asking of parents?
Um, I, I just think it would be good to ask them if they're not, you know, if their child is feeling well or not feeling well, and if they're not feeling well, then they should not be sending them to school. They should not be sending them on that bus to come to school. And that is, one reason, one big reason is that we want to be able to check the temps when they come, because not all parents are able to do that. So.
What is seating gonna look like on buses, just in case you do get one that comes with a temp?
Um, as far as I know, it's every other.
On the buses right now, it's every other seat.
Unless they're in the same family, or?
Families sit together, and every other seat is what?
That's a concern I have, is a kid is on the bus, they come here, and then you find they have a symptom. And who were they around, or?
Correct, and that is all that, yep.
And will they have to wear masks on the bus?
They'll have to wear a mask on the bus, and they'll have masks on the bus if they forget, they'll be handing them masks for them.
And they'll also have hand sanitizer, so everyone will use hand sanitizer as they get on the bus, along with here, when they get their temp checks and we do their system check, just asking what they feel okay, we will also. We will also have hand sanitizer for them when they get here. When they come in the building.
Country buses, they come in half full, or half, empty anyways, or half full.
What?
The country buses, they're usually.
Yeah.
Already.
Paul did say that they can drop at the school, then go pick up in town.
Any other questions, concerns, anything?
How about the, like, reporting? Talk a little bit about that, just.
Yep.
If it's parents, if it's students, if it's staff?
Right, so if it's any staff, the staff will report, you know, not feeling well, that kind of thing. Anytime they have two symptoms or more, I will start tracking. If they have two symptoms of COVID. Myself, with public health and Department of Health, we'll all be together in that and tracking it. And then they will go ahead and get tested and then wait for test results. They have to stay home, all staff, that kind of thing, will have to stay home until they get their test results. If they are, it's confusing part, bear with me. If they are a direct contact, there's direct and indirect. Direct contact means that they've either been with somebody that has been positive or they've been with somebody longer than fifteen minutes, closer than six feet. That classifies them as direct. So anytime they are direct contact, they're probably gonna be tested. They've been testing all directions. And then they would wait for their results. And then once they get their results, if the result is positive, that's where it gets confusing. If the result is positive, it's ten days even with no symptoms. But if it is positive or negative, or negative, then it is fourteen days from the time that you had that direct exposure. So, so it could really be ten days, but the ones that are within that director had direct contact with that positive person would initially be fourteen. So it could be different depending on there. The same thing is going to be with children. It's the same guidelines. The only thing with children is when it is their family. So if a child gets a positive result, then that family, when they get that positive result, once they're done with their ten days, the rest of the family needs to wait fourteen from then. So, and that's whether they have a symptom or they don't have a symptom. So indirect is when you're more than six feet away, less than fifteen minutes, or, you know, if you're passing somebody in a hall, or that kind of thing, it's indirect. It is not direct contact. So, any other questions? I know it's confusing. And every scenario is different. They're not all the same. So I'll be in close with public health and Department of Health for that.
We shouldn't have too many staff in direct close contact, prologue, I wouldn't think. We have distancing as practiced.
Right, unless they had a positive with a student and that student was in their classroom and, you know, they were talking without a, without a barrier, or that kind of thing, that would make it direct.
I try to work hard to put things in, in place for staff. So we can limit those situations, but I think it's gonna be pretty hard when you look at the younger ages, preschool, kindergarten, first second.
Yeah, and, and a lot of those, I don't even know what the percentage is, but a lot of them are asymptomatic, meaning they do not have any symptoms at all. And that's actually, goes for adults as well. There are adults that are asymptomatic as well.
So Mrs. Lennox is our only health aide that, she goes to both buildings. We have the days that are the, part of the day that she's not in one building, then we have someone cover for her. So looking at the number of staff and all the students we have district-wide, I think it would be beneficial for us to have another health aide and look and use our money, our funding that we're getting from the state to cover that. So then we'd have one in each building.
And that, and not only that, but I think it's good too, if we don't have a lot of staff going from building to building, we really need to try and limit the exposure of people going from place to place. And that's one way of doing it, is being able to have staff here, staff there. Because the minute you have an outbreak, you can have one person and that person can still take twenty out. Where they would still have to be home for that fourteen days if they were direct. So, yeah.
Jerry, I just get confused, like, how far it goes back. So let's say that you are positive and you, you look, hey, like you're at your family, you're at your home, and you turn out to be positive. Then you got your husband and say your daughter was there. And like, they've gone to work, like, I don't, like, how far does this all go back? I mean.
Well, and, and the Department of Health and public health really do a lot of that, more tracking than I've done. I mean, I've only had one case to track so far, but they do go back. They will ask you who you've been in contact with for sure for the last, at least three, I would say, three to seven days. At least, because that's when you're the most contagious, if you were to have symptoms.
And you would. So then, but, okay, so say like your husband, he's been like living with you, then he goes to work and he's around like six people, like, all day, every day. And then, so now, like.
But those would be, if I was positive, they would be, he would be a direct, but they would be an indirect. Because he has not tested positive yet. If he tested positive, then those people at his job would be direct. So I am the direct person because I have a positive test. My husband goes to work. We don't know if he's direct yet because he hasn't have been tested. Once you're tested, he's direct. If you live within the home, I know it's, it's very confusing, but if you live within your home and somebody is being tested, they're gonna tell you to social distance from your family as much as you can until those test results come back. Once the test results come back, if they were positive, then you can either go and get tested or you can wait fourteen days. So they wouldn't count my husband a direct contact until he was tested, even though I was positive. I mean, it's, it's confusing, but it's, it's direct and it isn't direct until it's confirmed direct. I guess that's pretty much easier way of saying it.
Something tells me, well, in September, we'll have it figured out. That's true.
Yeah. Do you have any, I mean, does that answer your question, Brenda? Or am I confusing you more? I'm sorry if I am.
No, that's pretty much good.
Okay.
All right?
All right?
Let's do some cleaning. All right, the daily cleaning, sanitation, disinfecting. There's a difference between sanitation and disinfecting. Sanitation is like your hand sanitizer. You can't wash your hands. Disinfecting is killing ninety-nine percent of the virus. So the daily cleaning will go on, just like we always do. Spend a little more time on touch surfaces and those common places like door handles, tops, things like that. All the bathrooms will continue to be disinfected every day, like they always have been. We've done this for years. We use, they're basically collarwash, disinfectant, every day, every bathroom in this facility, in both buildings. The Viking Elementary School has sinks for hand washing in every classroom. So that is a huge plus for us. So that's one of the duties that the custodial staff will really have to focus on, is making sure supplies are kept up for those. And those areas are disinfected and, and cleaned. And the floor is infected in those areas too. And we're really recommending every time that those students leave the classroom in their group and they come back, that they wash their hands. And that still is the best thing, practice to do. At the high school, we don't have that luxury of having a sink in every classroom. So every classroom will have hand sanitizer available for the students and staff. At the high school, especially when they are switching class, classes. Every teacher will have a disinfectant spray bottle. It's a peroxide that's diluted to a predetermined rate. It has a one-minute contact time. So they can just go down and, and mess it and get some contact with tabletop surface, sets are wet for a minute, dries up, and you're good to go, don't have to wipe it out. It won't be wiped out until like the end of the day, when the custodial staff comes in. That way is also a lot more economical than, than using wipes and stuff, because that stuff is hard to get. It's very hard to get. We have supplies of it, but it is hard to get and it's gonna be hard to maintain. So if we can use those consumables that are more in bulk and, and we can mix them and stuff like that, it makes it a lot more economical, a lot more readily available for us too. And then every classroom will have, that's a good quality towel. So that towel, along with the disinfectant spray, now you have a disinfectant wipe. And like I said, they're, they're easy to get. So we'll have that, hand sanitizers. The big thing, though, in classrooms and district-wide, no soft materials. No couches, no overstuffed chairs, no rugs, other than what the carpet is. Pillows, toys, soft toys, can't have any of it. So I put an email out, you guys probably all got it, a week or so ago, stating that. All the staff has until eighth to get rid of their stuff. And if they don't get rid of it, we will. So it's basically, if you wanna keep what's in your room, as far as furniture, their toys, they recommend to bag them up. If they're ours, we'll store them. If they brought them in, they can take them home and hopefully when this is all done, they can bring them back. Or, or we have, you know, a way to handle it better. Any questions?
Well, ventilation.
Ventilation, fortunately, our buildings have newer ventilations. We'll crank it up to exhaust the air and bring in fresh air more on days that we can. But you have to remember, when you bring in twenty below air, you have to heat it. It's hard enough to heat already and it's expensive. So that's a, that's a fine line. So we will exhaust as much air as we can, when we can. And our systems run very efficiently, but it's just kind of a balancing act. Any other questions? Okay, thanks. Most of our, Trevor, most of our water fixtures are they touch-free? As far as in all the multi-use bathrooms, the sinks are touch-free. The soap isn't, but, you know, once you get soap, then you wash your hands, you get. And then we have the hand dryers. And one thing we will do is we will prop the doors open in the bathrooms. That, that sounds kind of like, oh, we can't do that. But none of our bathrooms have direct sightlines in. They all have a little hallway for them, so that it, it's less things for people to touch. And if you notice our drinking fountains, they have a nice little PVC piece over the bubbler head. It's all right to use the water fill station or the bottle fill station, but they don't want that bubbler head used. Okay? Thanks.
Hey, Mr. Nelson, would you like to talk about elementary? Also, would you like to talk about childcare and anything with activities?
Sure. Elementary, one of the things we're looking to change is the, the drop-off for in-town kids, the ride to bus compared to kids that are dropped off by their parents. This has been a safety concern for many years. So what we're looking to do is after seven fifteen, if people are bringing their kids, they will go up to Chauncey Martin Parking Lot and drop their kids off up in the parking lot. And they can take the sidewalk down to door three. Where we will have people there to temperature check the kids that are coming in, that are being dropped off by their parents. That way, when the buses come in, they'll come to door one and they'll get their temperature checked at door one. This way, we are spreading out the kids so we don't have so many students all at one time coming to one door. And we'll have two people at each door to take temperatures there. After school, the same thing. We want parents that are picking up their kids to pick them up in Chauncey Martin Parking Lot. And the buses will use the lane in front. It's been a concern by bus drivers, because there's a lot of kids that are running through the buses to a vehicle. And we're hoping this will help keep things safe at the elementary, not only as they're entering the building, but before they get to the building and leaving the building. This will be a change for parents, but I think in the long run, it will be a safe change and a good change for all our kids and families coming to Viking Elementary. Breakfast, we're still working on breakfast and lunch. What that'll look like, it'll, it'll be different. When kids get to school in the morning, in the past, they've gone to the foyer and waited for breakfast. The change is they will all go right to their classroom now. There will not be in the foyer area waiting to be dismissed. And we don't know what breakfast will be. Uh, go pick up your breakfast and go eat in your classroom, or maybe the cooks will bring a cart around. Part of it, we have to work with the health department and the food department on how we have to do it, because in the past, kids have had to enter their numbers. So we don't know yet, we didn't get answers on exactly how we can do that. But we're working on that to get answers. And also lunch, how lunch will be served. I've talked with a couple areas principals and some are doing a couple classes in the cafeteria, like the kindergarten, first grade, and the other kids are eating in their classrooms. So we're working on a plan on how we can get everyone spread out, but have food served safely to everyone. Otherwise, questions on anything? I, I think one of the big things is class sizes and it's gonna come down to how many families want distance learning for their kids. As Mr. Corff mentioned, that we have to offer distance learning. So some of our decisions will determine on how many families are gonna have their kids at home for distance learning. If it's fifteen fifth graders and one of our fifth grade teachers would probably be the distance learning for that grade. And that's what they will do, is just teach those kids over the distance learning. If it's five fifth graders and let's say six, sixth graders, we might combine a couple of grades together that way for distance learning. So a lot of our decisions will have to be made after we get the numbers of the kids that are gonna be distance learning and how many will be in each room. After we get those numbers, then we'll be looking at classes and probably reshuffling some kids around to even out the classroom so they're even. We don't want one class to have ten kids and one to have twenty-two. So, so we'll balance those out after we get those numbers. Mr. Corff and myself are meeting with Mrs. Evenson tomorrow to talk about Club Vikes. If we go to the hybrid model, we do have to offer the Club Vikes during the day for essential workers, like we did last spring. Last spring, we had paras, office staff help with the Club Vikes during the school day. So we'll be meeting with Mrs. Evenson to come up with that plan again for this coming year. High school, eight tomorrow, has the, their board meeting. So right now, all activities are scheduled to start on August seventeen. We've been told that tomorrow will be the day when they make a decision on what may happen with activities. Kind of looked at four different options. One, having just the regular season starting, trying to go as long as they can. Another option, they're looking at shortening the season. You know, maybe it's four, six football games, maybe ten volleyball games. Some of the ideas I've heard is cutting out tournaments so you're not bringing eight teams in. So you're not bringing eight teams into one spot. You'd only bring in two teams in. So if someone does test positive, it would be, let's say, for example, us in Barnesville. It'd be us too affected if you bring in eight teams. Now you got eight teams that would be affected. So. Different options they're looking at. One idea that's been going around is moving some things back. They've kind of really said that they're not really looking at moving the fall sports to the spring. But that could change in their meeting today and tomorrow as well. So tomorrow will be a big day for activities. We're waiting to see what they come up with for. The state of Minnesota. So. Any questions on anything that I went over?
I don't hear anything.
Thank you.
Thanks, Derek. Okay, go on to, I'm just on page eight if you're in the packet. At the high school, we're in-person learning. Or if it's hybrid, the students that come to school, we're trying to have kids come between, they have to come really start to come at some fifteen. Breakfast will be served around seven thirty-five to seven fifty-five and then period one starts at seven fifty-five. And the day would end at three twenty-five for the in-person. For the distance learners. If we're in-person, then we have distance learners out there, what we would do then is have them virtually be part of class. That's what we would do with our distance learners. So they, distance learners would have a period one class for at seven fifty-five, they'd just be at home. If we were hybrid, right now the plan is if we're hybrid, students in class, of course, would be in, in the building. But the students that are not in class, distance learners and the other group, those group A, group B. Would be virtually. So they would be still participating. So right now that's the plan. We're still working with the tech team on some things. With that part. Any questions with the high school, with the in-person, distance learning, the hybrid? Okay. Transportation, transportation, if there's a couple of questions before, they're looking at every other seat. Masks will be provided if kids get on the bus and they forget. Hand sanitizer will be available on the bus. And they'll be sitting with their family members once they get on the bus. And this. Food service will come out with more information. For example, we're still working on details with if for distance learners to pick up a lunch or breakfast, how will work all that out? Or for a hybrid. That's going to come out in the next couple of weeks. Page twelve is mental health. We'll have some resources here and then contact information for mental health. And then on page thirteen, we've listed if there's anyone that you think, oh, we should add. Some contact information, people can pull it up, put it in the refrigerator, so forth. But it's kind of. Have questions related to attendance, bussing, there's the contacts and then email or phone number to contact. At the bottom, we do, if they still have questions, there's an email that we have, ask@bikes.us. So that's kind of our plan right now that we've. Put together. That we would offer in the different, the three learning models here at Pelican Rapids. Questions, concerns, ideas? Better change? Yeah, your microphone's off. Go ahead.
For transitions at the high school, will there be some details as far as what that might look like for the students as they move from class to class?
Yep. Well, we're working on that right now. We have some ideas out there. Well, first of all, we're really working hard at how can we keep students in pods? We're looking at that right now. And then we're looking at when they do go on the hallways, that there'll be a route that they go. So they're all going the same direction. And that can be difficult here at the high school, but Mr. Bergman's working on that. He's creative. So. We're counting on him to get that done.
Mr. Corf, I forgot to add that I am also meeting with Mrs. Fitzsimmons for preschool. This week to go over, she's been getting some different documents, looking at different class sizes of things. So we're meeting this week as well.
Mr. Corf, could you address music, Fayed and Mr. Nelson, could you address? If kids go outside for recess, can they take their mask off? Do we know that? Does Sheri know that? How can we get them really far spread out and be able to take some good gulps of fresh air without their mask on? Without violating anything? How are we going to keep our kids healthy with those masks on all day?
And just talking about the high school, about band and choir right now and PE. All three of them, we'd like to offer something. And we just don't know what that's going to look like. Right now we have some meetings this week to discuss band, choir, PE. We have a meeting tomorrow. With the superintendents that we're discussing that. So we're going to be looking into that. I think what we'll be doing too is encouraging our classes, high school, elementary. They can go outside to have class, to go outside and have class. With spacing. So they're able to get some fresh air, take their masks off. And. I think that will kind of break up the day for them too a little bit. Elementary, Mr. Nelson?
Yeah, we're hoping to get more answers tomorrow at my elementary meeting about how everyone else is interpreting. The laws that came out.
I have a question. Are we going to need to look at another health aide or nurse or somebody in the building?
Yeah, I would encourage us to do that. So we have one in each building.
Have you started that process at all?
Medicare dollars should cover some of that or?
We'll work, we'll root into, figure that out. Yes, we would use some of the care's money to help us with that.
I think it makes sense to have somebody in each building.
I don't think that's the last, that'd be a very difficult job. It'd be very stressful.
We need to formally post that or open it up or?
If you feel we should.
Help us that offer that service that.
We can open up among our staff where and outside too. But we can find someone that. Fits that position and.
So. Would we need somebody like a CNA? Maybe that's a question for Sheri. At least a CNA, something like that or?
Yeah, we just need to make sure that the health aide is first aid certified and CPR certified.
That's the only.
Those are requirements for a health aide.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah. I know Lakes Country Service Corp, they have helped us before with the CPR. So. Through them and I know Brad has also done. The first aid. And I'm a licensed practical nurse, so I already, and a CPR instructor. So. I have those classifications already. So I would need that updated or anything.
I think, Mr. Chair, John, just, we're going to be building our August seventeenth agenda and, and this is good discussion. So if you're indicating that you would consider approving that, we would want to post and hopefully have that higher August seventeenth. Also on the seventeenth, we're going to have a masking policy from MSBA. We are going to have a resolution from MSBA that, that sets our base plan and also appoints. The COVID incident team to make day-to-day, week-to-week decisions on that. So, so. So that's a, that's a great segue into that. The next board agenda is going to be, going to be very important to moving the district forward. So if there's other things like that, that the board would like to see, please let us know so that we can move forward. That seventeenth, we, we plan on that'll be our only school board meeting prior to school starts. But I would just say these are kind of strange times. We might have to have a special meeting early morning, later at night, something to approve. Some scenario that we, that we have to go, that we haven't even thought of yet that we might have to do. So, but we're going to, we're going to be very. Diligent about making sure that everything can happen on the seventeenth for the start of school on the, on the eighth.
I, I think it'd be wise to look for another health. Person. Anne, I see you're unmuted.
Yeah, I just wanted to, to clarify too. I think, you know, reading the survey results, especially from the parents. To ensure them that their children are going to be taught to the Minnesota standards. Going to try to do school as much as possible, just like they were in-person, even though it's distance. And to reassure them that they're going to get a quality education at Pelican Rapids.
Thank you. I agree.
And, and part of the communication plan is, is already started. We have a. Column article, Mr. Corf and I wrote a column article for the, the Pelican Press and then also for our website. You know, basically saying, you know, if we were starting school today and according to the data, you know, the board could consider these options. And then we're, we're waiting for that because we get up-to-date data. And, and all of that information. So I know it's frustrating that we're not getting this decision done sooner than later. But making that right baseline decision is, is key. And I think it's wise to wait till August thirteenth where we have the most up-to-date data. We'll meet with public health on the fourteenth and then have a recommendation for the board on the seventeenth. But you know, this, this would be a very appropriate time to express your concerns, your preferences. You know, just an open discussion about the start of school.
I guess communication, you know, with parents is, is going to be key. You know, I think. You know, school is trying to partner as best they can with them and just.
So they know how to get in touch with who they need to get in touch with is going to be extremely important.
And on the last page, it's, it's got contact information. I thought that was pretty helpful.
Yes, and, and for parents. If they know for sure that they are distance learning, they're just saying, you know, I've made that decision for my family. We definitely want them to call the school, you know, elementary student called the elementary, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Corf or the, the assistant secretary is there. So we can get them, we're starting lists. I mean, so it would be very, very good to know. You know, which families have made that determination, no matter what the board makes a decision on, whether it's hybrid or in-person. Their distance learning to start the year, we, we'd like to know that and we'll get that information and that request out to parents starting, starting tomorrow.
Anything else?
Is there a deadline for parents to make that decision?
To make what decision?
If we're going to have distance learned, is there a deadline?
Well, when we put a timeline, we'll kind of have a date for them to tell us. When they're going to, or a date, a deadline for them to tell us what, if they're going to choose distance learning. If we don't hear from them, we're expecting them to be either hybrid, whatever we say, hybrid or in-person.
That helps with numbers and knowing how many you're going to be in each classroom.
Yeah, so. So they'll call, they'll contact the appropriate building. So elementary will, students will contact elementary.
Is there flexibility if in the beginning they don't pick it and a few months down the road? Life happens and they go distance?
So what we have in is that you would, high school will be at quarter. Elementary's trimester, right? That trimester time that they can switch. So we're in two different models. They're distance and we're in hybrid or in-person. They can switch at that time. Unless they meet with administration to get approval to come in at a different time.
And I think especially to start the year, you know, they might want to start out distance learning and things are going very, very well in school and they decide, hey, I want to be part of the school. I, I think that's when they contact the administration and say, you know, here, here's what we, we'd like to do and, and. You know, it's all about the parents, about the child, what they know what's their child the best and, and, and we want to educate them in, in the best setting for them. You know, if possible, in person safely, that would be ideal, but. Not everybody's comfortable, you know. Everyone knows that I was part of the Fergus Falls Public Schools and we had an online school called IQ Academy. The, about forty percent of the people in that school have anxiety issues, for example. There's, there's, so. I can imagine, you know, and I've watched some news clips, there's schools starting in Georgia and different locations already and, and some of the kids are very nervous. They have, they have valid concerns. Others can't wait to get back and, and be with their friends, even if there's a mask. Even if I have to be a little distance away. So, so we just have to realize every child's different and we have to meet their needs the best we possibly can. And, and that means flexibility, I think, is going to be key.
Flexibility with structure. So you just can't randomly choose which model you want to do from day to day?
Exactly. We can't have movement like that, you know, we, we have to have, give it a try and, and work. We can't be switching every other day for sure. And so that's to Mr. Corf's point about having a plan and sticking to it for a while, give it a try. And then if there's some things that need to be changed, then we'll consider it with the parent and the student.
Cases of illness or if a student does get sick. I'm assuming that they would flip to distance learning unless they're obviously not able to participate. Is that kind of the plan?
Correct. Yep. Anything else before we move on?
You know, I'm not sure if Bill is still in the room, but I think, I think one of the key things that Mr. Corf talked about, especially at the high school is. If we're able to zoom every classroom, so for, you know, say we have fifteen, twenty classrooms, I'm not sure, teaching at any one time in the high school. And, and so if a student, if we're in hybrid, for example, Tuesday, they're in-person. Wednesday, they're at home and, and they can zoom in and attend just like a regular day. That will make all the difference in the world for our school district. And so. Mr. Simmons, Bill, are you able to comment on, on our capabilities as far as bandwidth to be able to, to do that?
Yes, I'm here. Just today I put in a piece of equipment that will. Double our bandwidth. We have a one gig connection right now and will be two gig connection. Probably within a week. I put the piece in today, but it still needs a little bit of work. Configuration to, to get it online. And I, and we've gone through the math. We haven't actually tested the system to make sure that we're going to. And that's really difficult to do because I mean, we're, we're talking up to. You know, I don't know, sixty-some Zoom meetings all at once. It's really difficult for us to do that. Not in a real way, a real world situation, but we're going to do the best we can try to, you know, approach that. We'll be doing that probably next week or, or later this week.
So if we are, you do fall a little bit short of bandwidth, that you can put in another machine that doubles it again, or how does that work?
No.
That's how techie I am. How's that?
At that rate. We would own one-fifth of what the city of Pelican Rapids has. So I don't, they may not even allow us to do any more than that.
Okay, all right. You know, you know, we talked to Mr. Corf, you know, if a teacher is presenting is the key time when they're, they're zooming, you know, so if they have a, say a twenty-minute lecture or presentation of some sort. And then they assign work in classroom, well, then they can shut the Zoom off and to save that bandwidth. And, and so there's training for our staff. I guess the key point here is whether you're distance learning, you're hybrid learning or you're in-person. You're attending school every single day. It's just, you just might be at home attending that period. And I think that's really going to help our students stay connected and involved and, and also learning, student achievement. And that's what we're all about. So I, I'm really excited about that. Thank you.
Yeah, and I did, to. Touch on that same point, we've been discussing those same things. You know, if you're using your Zoom for twenty minutes of your fifty-minute period. Just turn it on for that part and shut it off for the rest. We've, we've already talked about that in the. Teacher meetings that we've had so far and we'll, we'll discuss that more. Before school starts during workshop.
Like the lectures, if, if a student missed, will be recorded too from the teachers?
Yep, there's.
That's the point.
That, that's fun right now for high school if they have like two props that they would take. That, that's fun right now for high school, if they have like two props that they would take, take one of them so kids can watch in the evening.
Any other questions before we move on? All right, Jerry, anything before we move on, we covered it.
I, I think we've, if, if the school board questions have been answered for C and D, I, I think we're, we're okay, it's just, as we had mentioned, even though these are agenda items, both E, approve a learning plan, and, and F, well, let's just cover E. So we're, we're recommending do not take action, we're not ready yet to take action, we need to meet with public health and get the resolution for E, so I would say no action there. F, we would like school board members, if you could have a discussion to, to appoint people to the, the incident command team, that would be based on that, but we're not ready to make the decision on allowing them to make changes to the plan yet. That'll be part of the resolution from MSBA, MSBA on August 17th, so, so the first part of that would be appoint school board members to that committee. They would be Zoom meetings, so it wouldn't be like you have to be in-person at those meetings, so it would be public health, it would be, Mr. Corf, could you run down who's on the team right now?
Right now, we have Mr. Steves, Mrs. Lenas, Mr. Nelson, and myself on the team right now at this time.
You could have, you could have up to three school board members without a quorum, you, you can't, you couldn't have four to six, because then you'd be meeting and have a quorum. So, so I would recommend one to, two for sure, a third could be an alternate, or just appoint the three, and hopefully two or three of you could make it to the meeting.
Quick question, Jerry, do we need to do anything with E, like table it, or can we just skip it?
I, I think you can just table that, as, as long as there's not a motion, it would die for, the, the, the agenda item would just die for lack of a motion. So you could call for the motion, and if there is none, you could move on.
Okay, we have a motion to approve a learning plan for, as of August 3rd to 2020. We have a motion. We have a motion. We have a motion, I don't hear a motion, so. Move on, okay, I don't have. White COVID-19 Incident Command Team to make decisions regarding learning plan adjustments based on MDH's county data, so we need to find three board members, and then do we prefer just to have two, and then alternate, or what would we like to do?
I, I think that's who's, who would be interested, if you can get two people for sure and then alternate, or if you have three people for sure. I, I think we're, we're comfortable with the, how, how the board wants to handle this.
Who would like to be on it? Anne, you're, you're unmuted, now you're muted.
I can do it.
We have Anne. Thank you, Anne. Does anybody else like to be on it? Brittany, Greg, Mike?
I'm already part of the command incident team. More private sector.
I, I can.
And, and John, I'm going to, I'm going to put you on the spot here as board chair, and also in your role in your professional life, I, I think you'll know a lot about this and about handling difficult situations, and, and I, so I personally, I, I think you should be on the team, John.
Anybody have a problem with that? All right, so we have Anne, Brenda, and myself. Do we need to do motions for those formally, or do we wait till the next meeting to, to do that?
I think we can do that at the next meeting, the indication is that we have people that are going to be appointed, actually, the board chair can appoint them without a motion, so John, if you would just make that verbal appointment out loud here on camera, I think we would have that done, but it, but I think we will incorporate when next meeting, we'll have a list of all the COVID-19 Incident Command Team members, so everybody knows who they are. We'll have that on the 17th as well.
Should we do that, or I can name them off here too?
Why don't you name them as well, please?
I am going to appoint myself, Anne Peterson, and Brenda Olson to the Incident Command Team with the other members. With more to follow on the next meeting on the 17th. Anything else, Jerry, before we move on to upcoming meetings?
No, just only, we just want to make sure we're answering board members' questions, questions they're hearing from parents. I think we've, I'm, I'm very impressed again with Mr. Corf, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Martinez, Mr. Steves, Sherry. Everyone working so diligently and, and just really thank the, the team, the staff members that are coming in and working these hours and, and putting their heads together for a plan, it, it's really a, a great sign of teamwork, and Pelican Rapids is, is writing a good plan, and it'll be better by the 17th when we, when we have more details. So thank you, I guess is the big thing.
No, I'm good.
Derek, do you have anything?
Nope.
I just, one more, if, yes, you're getting questions that family, parents are having, let us know, and what we'll do each week is do like a question and answers where there's comment questions, and we'll post them on our website and with answers, so Becky Wanters helping us with that. Give me a good idea.
Yes, I'd especially like to thank Becky Want for the, putting the program together, it's, it's really, really improved it, and it's all about clarity. A lot of this plan will be links, so for example, the icon about masks and how to do masks properly will be a separate icon on the website, along with washing hands, so. So we really want to drive our parents to that website, so they have all the links, all the information regarding starting school, who to contact, how do I do this, how do I do that, what day is it, is it a group A day, a group B day, like I had mentioned before, so. Thank her very, very much for her excellent work.
Quick comment on the website, a lot of the teacher websites maybe aren't current. Can we make sure that those are up to date and, and ready for the school year?
Yep, yes we will, we're working on our website right now.
Hearing nothing further, I'm going to go over upcoming meetings, our regular meeting. Guessing the agenda is going to be pretty loaded up, August 17th, at 6:00 PM. A work session September 14th at 6:00 PM. And a regular meeting September 21st at 6:00 PM. And the work session at September is because of Labor Day. The first week, right? Second week?
Yes.
Yes.
So. Okay. Hearing nothing further, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Mike?
I'll second.
Second by Brittany. Any discussion on adjourning? Hearing no discussion, all votes favor signify by saying aye, and I'm going to do a roll call. Brenda?
Aye.
Anne? Mike?
Hi.
Greg?
Hi.
Brittany?
Hi.
All right, we're adjourned, thanks, everybody.